City Council, please come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
Councillors Kadim?
Here.
Dionne?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Camaro?
Here.
What were you going to say?
Off to a good start.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion of the public hearing?
Second.
A motion to open the public hearing has been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. Item number one is a joint poll location Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England for a new, for one newly owned poll location as follows on Current Road. They're going to install one jointly owned poll, 1-10, in line between existing jointly owned poll 1-1 and Poll 2 on Current Road. Poll 1-1 will be placed approximately 55 feet east of Poll 2 and 75 feet west of Poll 1-1. Poll 1-10 will serve as a junction poll to supply 6/3 Current Road Blount Fine Foods with the new overhead service in accordance with Plan Number 30978826. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents at all?
Good evening. Aaron Roy, 1250 Brayton Point Road, Somerset, representing National Grid. Yeah, National Grid's looking to install one new jointly owned poll in line between Poll 1-1 and 2, Current Road. Just as the President said, this will be serving a new service, the fourth service for Blount Fine, uh, Blount Seafood, Fine Foods. That's it.
Thank you very much. Are there any opponents? Any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number two. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England for one newly owned poll located as follows on Kilborn Street. There will be one newly owned poll location, one newly owned anchor relocation, and one newly owned poll relocation. This petition is being proposed, is proposing to relocate a jointly owned poll, Number 11, and anchor approximately 45 feet northerly of its current location on Kilborn Street towards Dwelly Street, and the installation of a newly owned poll, Number 11-50, on Kilborn Street, approximately 45 feet south of the current location of existing poll Number 11. This relocation of Poll Number 11 and anchor and the installation of Poll Number 11-50 is required due to the planned construction of the new entrance into King Philip Estates and Princeton Circle in accordance with Plan Number 30854208. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents at all?
Good evening again. Aaron Roy, 1250 Brayton Point Road, Somerset, representing National Grid. This one's a little more insailed. This one is for the new development going in off of Kilborn Street, Princeton Circle, King Philip Estates. Poll 11, existing Poll 11 and JO Anchor sits directly in the middle of the new entrance. So, this existing Poll and Anchor are looking to be moved approximately 45 feet north and adding a new Poll, Poll 11-50, 45 feet south, in order to make up the span between Poles 11 and 12. Poll 11 will be the new service poll that'll feed into Princeton Circle, feed, I believe, 15 lots or 14 lots that are in that development.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, to curb removals. Kyra Caderow, 363 Hyacinth Street, the removal of curbing as follows. The existing opening is eight feet, curb to be removed is 24 feet, there is no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 32 feet. The vacant parcel is currently serviced by an eight-foot curb opening. The applicant proposes to expand that existing opening by an additional eight feet while also creating a new 16-foot opening to provide a horseshoe driveway scenario. The proposed proposal is being made as the city is in the process of reconstruction of Hyacinth Street. The total opening for this location will be 32 feet. The vote taken by the Forward City Council on July 16, 2024, to approve the removal of 16 feet of curbing for a total opening of 24 feet will be rescinded. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents at all? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents at all? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four. Angelica Pennefield, 71 Astor Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 71 Astor Street, existing opening is 23 feet, curb to be removed is 2 feet 4 inches, there is no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 25 feet and 4 inches. The existing, existing parcel is currently serviced by a 23-foot curb opening on Astor Street. The applicant proposes to extend the opening by an additional 2 feet 4 inches. The total opening for the location will be 25 feet 4 inches. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents to this public hearing? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number five. Antonia Di Carvallo, 680 Bay Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. At 1342 County and Aslop Street, existing opening is 16 feet, curb to be removed is 14 feet, there is no curb to be added. Combined opening proposed after alteration is 30 feet. The existing parcel is currently serviced by a 16-foot curb opening on Aslop Street. The applicant proposes to extend the opening by an additional seven feet on each side of the opening. The proposal is being made as the city is in the process of reconstruction of Aslop Street. The total opening for the location will be 30 feet. Are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Any opponents, ma'am clerk? Do you have a?
We have a written letter of opposition.
Okay. Will the council copy that letter? Or do you want to, you're looking to read it now? Or just give them copies?
We can supply a copy of the letter.
There's a letter of opposition, I'm sorry.
There is a letter of opposition.
There is a letter of opposition.
Number six.
On number six, correct. We can. Are there any other opponents to this public hearing? Any other opponents?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Has it made? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing is now closed.
Allison, can you have that letter?
We're going to run right into the City Council Finance Meeting.
Allison, can you have that letter before we vote on that tonight?
Do I have it?
Yeah, just make a copy.
Yes.
We'll take a quick recess before the regular meeting. We'll call the roll.
Councillor Kadim?
Here.
Dionne?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Raposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
And President Camaro?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First, we have citizens input time. A number of individuals have signed up. Each individual has three minutes to speak before the council. First, we have Bill Lacy. Subject matter: Performing Arts Program. Come down, Bill. Please have a seat, speak into the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Hi, Bill.
Good evening, members of the council.
Good evening.
My name is Bill Lacy. I'm not a resident of the city of Fall River. In fact, I live in New Bedford, your sister city.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second. Motion to waive the rules has been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The reality is, as I signed your guestbook, I included the address of 160 Rock Street, Fall River. That's home to the Church of the Holy Spirit. It's a merged parish of three prior Episcopalian parishes in this city. For the last 32 years, I've been the music director at two of these parishes who have merged. Prior to that, though, for 38 years, I was Mr. Lacy every morning. When I taught in New Bedford, I was a music teacher. I come before you because the Church of the Holy Spirit has an interesting blessing that I'd like you to know about. We have a performing arts program that was launched three years ago that is suffering from attendance difficulties because we have a blessing of endowments both inside our charter. It makes it impossible for us to advertise, which means as we do our work, we look for help, and frankly, tonight I am here looking for help from you. Let me tell you what this is about quickly. From September through June, we invite children from grades three through eight to attend two rehearsals each week in our Starmaker Theater. This program is completely free. There is nothing that is charged to any resident. Sadly, right now, even though we're located in the city of Fall River, all of my children come from the town of Somerset, and that's simply because we have no way of penetrating a city as large as Fall River. The Somerset Public Schools did us a solid, saw the benefit to their children, to their families, and said, yes, we'll distribute materials for you. I don't know that that's possible here, but what I do know is every single one of you represent neighborhoods just like the neighborhood this program is in. Within those neighborhoods are parents whose children want to do programs like this, but as they look outside as to what's available, it's very easy to spend $100 minimum per month and sometimes much more for a child to be involved in performing arts. Our program only does two things. We're involved in song and dance. We create a show troupe. This is not musical theater. We don't stage productions or miniature productions of well-known musicals. What we do is we select thematic materials.
You have 30 seconds left.
Motion to waive the rules for additional three minutes.
Motion to waive the rules for additional three minutes has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Counselor Raposo.
Motion carries. Do you have additional three minutes?
In this past year, because it was an election year and everybody is kind of hoo-ha in America, we did exactly that. We did a tribute to American music because it's our belief that what we do with those children should reflect the best of our past. So, we never sing or perform to any modern music. We go back decades, and when we do that, we take children back in history and let them experience some of those same feelings that we did. It gets better, though. Parents have absolutely no financial involvement whatsoever in this. We're fortunate to have Higgins, Billings, and Durfee Endowments. Just the interest on those things alone will last forever, but we can't advertise. So, it's almost like being at sea thirsty and you have nothing but seawater around you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor C2, yeah, Jan, do you have something to say?
Can't what they're doing be advertised on the city website?
Anything can be advertised on the city website.
So, the reality is, it has been there, it has drawn us, no new children from the city of Fall River. The city helped us out in the past, they've put it on a website. This is not how you get to children and families with a free program, and I think we all understand that. The very first thing I allowed for was that I spent 38 years as a public school teacher.
So, excuse me, sir.
I know where free programs go on.
Excuse me, I don't want to interrupt, but you're on limited time, so I want to, so what, what is it that you feel you need from us to be able to get your information out where it needs to be?
Thank you. First of all, we would have to say that none, none of you have gained the position that you have if you're not aware of people around you and people are aware of you. So, the very first thing I would ask everybody in this room who's an elected official is that right at the top of September, the very end of August, allow me to send you flyers that you could post on your social media websites along with, because this matters, a statement from you. If you post something, people glance. If you say something about it, people pay attention.
Okay. That seems like a simple fix. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor C5, Counselor C6.
Have you, have you contacted the school department?
So, the one and only thing that we were, we were suggested to do was to get in touch with the city because at one point in time they had ARPA funds, and we wanted to get on a list. That list would penetrate your school system. We were denied that because, no surprise, it was a financial program.
You have money, so you don't need it.
We wouldn't take government money.
One of the things you should do. One of the things you should do is contact the school department. I'm sure that they would pass that out.
I would ask you to do that.
Okay.
Let the school committee know.
Go in front of the school committee and speak at citizen input time there, and they'll more than likely pass something like that out. The other thing is, there's a girl that works upstairs in the mayor's office. Her name is Samantha. If you call Samantha, she'll be able to help you to get that out. And certainly, send brochures to us because we can all put it, I mean, I can put it on Facebook or other people can do the same. And I, I think it's very good what you're doing for the children, and I thank the church for all that they do. I know we have our Saturday Kitchen there, they're having a carnival this weekend, again, free. I think they do a great job, but that's my suggestion to you. And feel free to call and see if we can hook you up with somebody in the school department.
If I could just leave by telling you that you'll have distributed to you a frequently asked question page about our program. On it, there are contact information just for myself.
Thank you. Counselor C3, Counselor Hart?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lacy, thank you for coming here tonight. I was on the school committee just recently, and a lot of people would come to us and asking, like various little leagues and other leagues like that, how we can get in touch with these students in the schools, and they would send out emails, excuse me, digital emails, to all the parents. And so, I think that's something you can.
There it is.
Yeah, I think that's something that the, that the school department will gladly do with, for you.
You're exactly right.
Yeah.
It's to penetrate the families themselves.
Yep.
But this was a good start. I've learned something.
Thank you.
But, but, but my, my point is, I think one of my other colleagues mentioned it, if you go to the school committee and do citizens input there, then their meetings are once a month, they just had one last month, last night, so there'll be another one next month if you go there. And also, too, that's when school's starting, so that might be a good opportunity for you to attend that meeting, citizens input, and they'll talk to whoever is in charge of that. I can't remember who does that, but that's something that they'll be glad to do for you.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
I'll close with this, Counselors.
We have one more Counselor. I want to try and.
Counselor Hart, I'm sorry, sir.
Triggered me, make a comment.
Thank you, sir.
About 20, 25 years ago, a doctor, Jay Shakni, who's now retired, started the Katie Brown Educational Program, dealing with abuse of children, women, domestic abuse, and they actually go into the classroom and teach. So, it's a nonprofit, they really did a great job getting into the school system. So, that's, that's an example, but the only thing that pops in my head is the religious part of this. For instance, you know, there's many Catholic schools in, in the city, you can try that, I don't know if that'll fly, but, you know, there is some strict rules with regard to public schools and religion, and maybe I'm off base with my comment, but it's just a thought that, but that's up to the school committee.
Right.
Not us, so I would definitely think it's worth the oil to, to go there, and maybe they can do a distribution.
Thank you, Counselor.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have CJ Ferry. Subject matter: Dictatorship of Representation.
Dictatorship.
Dictatorship of Representation. I'm sure he'll explain it to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor President, City Councillors. I have said this several times over the past several weeks, months. I really feel as though this city is under a dictatorship. We have city councillors which don't represent the people, they represent the sixth floor. We have school committee members which don't represent the people, they represent the sixth floor. If you would have seen last night's school committee meeting?
I did.
You would have been appalled. You would have been appalled at that meeting. I wasn't getting my way, so I'm going to do, take the vote anyways, and that's the way it is, and nobody's going to tell me otherwise. That's a dictatorship. We are a constitutional republic. You people were all elected to represent the people, not represent special interests, not represent a particular person, not to represent an administration, but to represent the people. Chip and I have said numerous times about part of the first of the Massachusetts Constitution, that you do not serve anyone but us. You are our representatives, and it's tough because a lot of times, we get statements like we got at the last city council meeting from the city administrator, don't listen to these people. Damn, you're wrong. You listen to these people because these people are the citizens that voted you in office. You represent the people. The city administrator, the city administration, even many city councillors don't like what's heard, but you have to hear it, and you've got to take it to heart, and you have to say, well, this is one view, and you get many views, so you have to weigh them all out, and there's no question about it. I'm not the be all, end all. I'm not Methuselah, okay? I'm not going to cut the baby and have to figure it out. But you have to make sure that your votes represent the people and represent the best interest of the people, namely, what we really need to have our best interests represented is the fact that our city financially is hurting. And I don't necessarily mean the city of Fall River, I mean the people in the city of Fall River. When you go to the grocery store and your grocery bill is $80 and you've got nothing for groceries, you have a problem. When you've got a rent that's $1,400 on a triple-decker because the property was sold and you can't afford to live there anymore, you've got a problem.
You have 25 seconds.
And these decisions that this city council makes with approvals of TIPS and TIES and other things affect those people, and it affects the well-being of our city, our neighborhoods, and the people. I want to thank you for listening, and remember, represent the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Camaro. Subject matter: Government and Wars.
Counselor President, I respectfully ask for a point of personal privilege, and just want to make a, just a comment because I've been around a long time, and people love to make rumors. I want to make sure that if anybody notices, I'm not having cheek implants, and my eyes are swelled up, I haven't, I had an allergic reaction to, and people may not know this because I did not know that, that English IV is as contagious as poison ivy.
I wouldn't notice.
Sumac, or, yeah, or it's down. I've been on medication for like four days already, so, so I didn't get this far, and I got a, I got an allergic reaction.
I thought it was Botox, but that's all right.
Yeah, oh, yeah, some, I knew somebody'd say that. Thanks, Mr. President.
Plain Hamble.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm glad it wasn't an allergic reaction to the city council.
CJ kinda, CJ kinda touched on it, he talked about part of the first, but I'm here to talk. I very rarely, you know, I've been around a long time, I've seen wrong numbers, I've seen a lot of things, and I just send you the correct numbers and say my piece. But at that last meeting, we heard about disrespect and things, but I was, I was not happy with the comment made that you don't have to listen to those people in the audience, and I'm not going to say this just because it's a personal thing, it's a legal issue. CJ Ferry referenced the Constitution that you swore an oath to, part of the first five, which says you are our substitutes and agents, and you are answerable to at all times. It doesn't mean you have to agree, but the four people who presented that night were citizens of the city of Fall River. You, it's not optional for you to listen to what they've got to say, it is mandatory. It's your legal fiduciary obligation to listen to people, whether you agree with them or disagree with them, because you were elected to represent them. And as I said in that letter I sent you, informational background, Sean Kadim was, Counselor Kadim, was 100 correct to say it's your job as fiduciaries to listen. You don't have to.
the Katie Brown Educational Program, dealing with abuse of children, women, domestic abuse. And they actually go into the classroom and teach. So, it's a nonprofit. They really did a great job getting into the school system. So, that's, that's an example. But the only thing that pops in my head is the religious part of this. For instance, you know, there's many Catholic schools and, and the city, you can try that. I don't know if that'll fly. But, you know, there is some strict rules with regard to public schools and religion, and maybe I'm off base with my comment, but it's just a thought that, but that's up to the school committee.
Right.
Not he, not us. So, I would definitely think it's worth the while to, to go there, and maybe they can do a distribution.
Thank you, Councilor.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have CJ Ferry. Subject matter: Dictatorship Representation.
Dictatorship.
Dictatorship Representation. I'm sure he'll explain it to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, City Councilors. I have said this several times over the past several weeks, months. I really feel as though this city is under a dictatorship. We have city councilors which don't represent the people, they represent the sixth floor. We have school committee members which don't represent the people, they represent the sixth floor. If you would've seen last night's school committee meeting
I did.
You would've been appalled. You would've been appalled at that meeting. I wasn't getting my way, so I'm gonna do, take the vote anyways, and that's the way it is, and nobody's gonna tell me otherwise. That's a dictatorship. We are a constitutional republic. You people were all elected to represent the people, not represent special interests, not represent a particular person, not to represent an administration, but to represent the people. Chip and I have said numerous times about part of the first, of the Massachusetts Constitution, that you do not serve anyone but us. You are our representatives. And it's tough, because a lot of times, we get statements, like we got at the last city council meeting, from the city administrator, "Don't listen to these people." Damn, you're wrong. You listen to these people, because these people are the citizens that voted you in office. You represent the people. The city administrator, the city administration, even many city councilors don't like what's heard. But you have to hear it, and you've gotta take it to heart. And you have to say, "Well, this is one view." And you get many views, so you have to weigh them all out. And there's no question about it. I'm not the be-all, end-all. I'm not Methuselah. Okay? I'm not gonna cut the baby and have to figure it out. But you have to make sure that your votes represent the people, and represent the best interest of the people. Namely, what we really need to have our best interests represented is the fact that our city financially is hurting. And I don't necessarily mean the city of Fall River. I mean the people in the city of Fall River. When you go to the grocery store, and your grocery bill is eighty dollars, and you got nothing for groceries, you have a problem. When you've got a rent that's fourteen hundred dollars on, in a triple-decker, because the property was sold, and you can't afford to live there anymore, you got a problem.
You have twenty-five seconds.
And these decisions that this city council makes, with approvals of TIPS and TIES and other things, affect those people. And it affects the well-being of our city, our neighborhoods, and the people. I want to thank you for listening, and remember, represent the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Camaro. Subject matter: Government and Laws.
Council President, I respectfully ask for a point of personal privilege. I just wanna make a, just a comment, because I've been around a long time, and, and people love to make rumors. I want to make sure that if anybody notices, I'm not having cheek implants, and my eyes are swelled up. I haven't, I had an allergic reaction to, and people may not know this, 'cause I did not know that, that English IV is as contagious as poison ivy.
I wouldn't notice.
Sumac, or, yeah, or it's down. I've been on medication for, like, four days already, so, so. I didn't get this far, and I got a, I got an allergic reaction.
I thought it was Botox, but that's all right.
Yeah, oh, yeah, some, I knew somebody'd say that. Thanks, Mr. President.
Play handball.
Yeah.
I'm glad it wasn't an allergic reaction to the city council.
CJ kinda, CJ kinda touched on it. He talked about part of the first. But I'm here to talk, I very rarely, you know, I've been around a long time, I've seen wrong numbers, and I've seen a lot of things, and I just send you the correct numbers and say my piece. But at that last meeting, we heard about disrespect and things, but I was, I was not happy with the comment made that you don't have to listen to those people in the audience. And I'm not gonna say this just because it's a personal thing, it's a legal issue. CJ Ferry referenced the Constitution that you swore an oath to, part of the first five, which says you are our substitutes and agents, and you are answerable to at all times. It doesn't mean you have to agree, but the four people who presented that night were citizens of the city of Fall River. You, it's not optional for you to listen to what they've got to say. It is mandatory. It's your legal fiduciary obligation to listen to people, whether you agree with them or disagree with them, because you were elected to represent them. And as I said in that letter I sent you, informational background, Sean Kadim was, Counselor Kadim was one hundred correct to say, "It's your job, as fiduciaries, to listen. You don't have to agree, but you gotta listen." And that was buttressed, the Constitution was re-buttressed by Barron versus Coenda. And it said, "It buttressed the absolute rights of the people to speak freely to politicians." It also went out to say that government officials cannot silence members of the public based on a substance that their input during, quote, "public input," unquote, periods of government meetings. That's what we're in here today. That's where we were last month. And that is de facto silencing when you say, "Ignore them. Don't listen to them." And it also said, they ruled that civility codes that limit criticism of public officials are contrary to multiple provisions of our state constitution, which provide, quote, "robust protection of public criticisms of government officials." Listen, I've been doing this a very long time. I don't get angry too often, but I am angry, because I heard I was offended by somebody's eyeball roll. Well, you know something? I've been eyeball rolled and got the stink eye by a lot of people in my time, because of the things I've said, and I've reciprocated. But I never disobeyed a law. I ran a union for twenty-five years and won every arbitration, every JLMC case, because I followed the law. And I listened to the other opponent. That's Hegel. In case anybody doesn't know who Hegel is
Yeah, twenty seconds.
The theory of dialectic materialism, okay? Thesis, antithesis, and synthesis. That's the only way we move forward. And I'll close, not a quote this time, with Hallen's razor. A lot of people know what Occam's razor is. It's, the simple explanation is normally the best. This is one of my phrases. I don't agree with the ending, the word that he used, but obviously, he was, he was a philosopher. Never attribute to malice that which can be adequately explained by stupidity. Okay? But to me, that's the wrong word. The difference between ignorance and stupidity, and this is right out of the dictionary, means not having the proper knowledge in a particular field. And I think that we have some people here that came from the private sector. They're not representing a, a, a business that can convince, that was another word that was used, "It's my job to convince." It's not your job to convince. It's their job to give you accurate information for you to make a decision. You convince people in court.
Thank you very much, Mr. Camaro.
You don't convince people at the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Kent Rigo. Subject matter: Local Government.
Thank you, City Councilors. I'm here because I do not like the state of my city right now. I don't like the crime. I don't like to see people suffer, okay? I've been through a lot personally, trying to speak out against certain things, housing. Why are we not allocating this weed money towards housing? Silence, right? Nobody's got an answer for that, right? So
Hold on, hold on. What do you mean, we're not, it goes to the general fund, and then we allocate it for everything?
Now, this is my first citizens input, just
Okay, but I mean, you're asking a question.
No, I'm just
So, I figured I'd just let you know what happened with that money. It goes to the general fund, and we allocate it accordingly throughout everything that we need to allocate it.
Okay, we, we need to figure out something to help the people, instead of all these illegals that are coming in. I'm not gonna keep going on and on, but some of you people recognize my voice, some of you people may recognize me. I apologize to some of the city councilors for some remarks I've made back in the day. But coming from where I see things in this city, how we are getting gentrified, how people that are not even from here, this country, I mean, are get, get more benefits than people and our veterans do. And I'm gonna be coming a little bit more, maybe a little bit more seasoned, coming here and being a little bit more vocal at my local city council meeting, where I was intimidating, was intimidated by coming here years before. So, thank you. I appreciate the time, councilors.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Kelly Buchanan.
Good evening.
Good evening, Kelly.
How are you guys?
Good.
I hope I'm smiling for a reason. First things first, I'm glad to see the city is actually following some ordinances and laws. I was blessed to get a call last week from the clerk's office, not the call that you asked for me to get, regarding my dog, that she wasn't licensed. They actually, City Hall actually called me at home, on my phone, to let me know that I have an unlicensed dog. I apologized for being a rebel, didn't know it was something I was supposed to be doing. I went right down that day, paid the ten dollars, followed the laws and ordinances, and I'm glad that we're doing that. So, I just want to hear the good news. Are we gonna do it with the illegal encampments? Are we gonna do it with all the other illegal things? Because I got the trash police every week for me, not worried about it. I do my due diligence to make sure my barrels are right. My neighbors not so happy. They've gotten tagged, both of them, on the side, as I may, and others. So, I'm glad that we're following ordinances, I'm glad we're following laws, I'm glad, I'm happy. I apologize for falling short. However, I like to see it done citywide. So, do we have anything?
No, thank you.
We have ordinances.
Councilor C. Two.
We have ordinances coming up.
Yeah, I just want to say that we do have an ordinance in front of us regarding encampments.
Praise God.
So, we're on our way.
Is that gonna be spoken about tonight, or?
Yeah, it's gonna get referred to ordinance.
It's an ordinance committee that'll approve it, that'll come back to us.
We're gonna have ordinance meetings regarding it. You yield, Councilor?
Yeah, sure.
Councilor C. Seven, Councilor Pozo. Do you have your hands up? You yield? Okay.
And we will have an ordinance committee meeting before our next council meeting, so we can put it through.
So, we have an order, I just want to make sure
We have an ordinance.
Sometimes I'm a little slow. We have an ordinance?
We have an ordinance that is coming before us tonight.
Okay.
On the encampments, and we have one on housing and abandoned houses, et cetera. We have two ordinances coming in. So, those will be referred to the ordinance committee. I will have a meeting on both of those to come back to the council for the next meeting to be voted on. I'm not gonna just let it sit there. I know, we want to move things.
Yes, I was out there cleaning today, my street, and I filled up the barrel.
Well, I hear you. And I think that, honestly, people of Fall River need to take a little bit more pride, 'cause I am sick and tired of driving around and seeing weeds coming out of everybody's sidewalk. That's not government's job.
All right, Councilor, just three minutes, please. Let's just, let's just finish this. You can file a resolution about, let's clean up the weeds.
I hate them.
Okay.
Thank you. I yield.
Are you upset with this, or?
I just want to make one more comment, if I may.
Councilor C. Two.
I just want to make the point that this is a draft ordinance.
Correct.
It's not an ordinance on the books, legal, until it goes to ordinance.
Right.
So, just so people know that. So, the next step, it goes to ordinance, comes back to the council, and then we have a law.
All right, how long generally does that take?
As long as it takes the councilors to decide if they're gonna implement that ordinance, or make changes to the ordinance, or whatever comes out of that meeting. There is no set time, but as things are referred down to this council, and we send them to the appropriate committee for discussion, they get worked out there, and then, once they agree on something, they present it to the council. Then they get support from the council.
First step is, first step is tonight. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two, it's a resolution, convey it to discuss potential use of the Bristol County American Rescue Plan Act funds to purchase an automobile vehicle for the Greater Fall River Association, adopted June 11, 2024. We're gonna hold discussion. Come down, please. Thanks, Karen.
Hi, Kara.
Hi.
Attorney Hump, nice to see you.
Councilor C. Seven, Councilor Pozo.
Before Attorney Hump speaks, I just want to clarify for my colleagues. So, I filed this resolution, kind of caught before the horse, per se, in preparation to do a Bristol County ARPA application. However, some of the details have since changed. So, Attorney Hump's here to kind of explain what has changed and where we're gonna go from here. So, I'll yield to her.
Thank you. And this sort of is a precursor to what I'm gonna speak about later, so, like, twenty-five words or less, I can double dip here. So, as I told Andrew, Bristol County Treasury has a deadline, their original deadline was June 30th, which has come and gone for the deadline for the applications, and they extended it to the end of September. My understanding is, is that, that any application that you've put forth, that, that has to also be encumbered by that time. And so, it makes advancement of funds almost impossible to do, because you wouldn't encumber something that you don't have approval from Bristol County Treasury. And it also runs up against that December deadline for obligations as well. So, I, it's my opinion that we should be doing one big advancement to use up the funds, and then move that money, the, free up that money in the city ARPA fund. So, the art mobile, because it's also a vehicle, needs a qualifying Title I project to fall under. This was the same thing I explained with the public service and safety equipment application that I rescinded. And so, this is an impossibility, as is the veterans' van. So, we have the veterans' van, but I'm also asking later to rescind that, and we'll reimburse that through the city ARPA. I don't, I'm trying to simplify it, but it is actually really confusing.
Well, I think we did it. Councilor C. Five, Councilor, do you have a question?
I do. I know you said that you are rescinding the veterans' van. However, we do have a grant for that van, correct?
So, that's actually, that, I heard that we also, we, that's, there is a grant that is available.
Right.
And I don't know if that, they were looking at that to do another van. So, I, we've already bought, we've done the entire procurement purchase. We have it. So, with my request to rescind tonight, we would just make a contract through the city ARPA, and then we would pay the Veterans Service Office, we'd reimburse them with that city ARPA money for what they pulled out of their budget.
I did hear that there was grant money available for that.
I did hear that as well.
For that, not for this, but.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Attorney Hump.
Councilor C. Two. Thank you, Councilor.
Hi, good evening. So, how much money are we talking about in terms of Bristol County funding? How much, how much is left? When you say, "Take one large amount and move forward with it."
Yeah, so, just so I'm giving you.
Yeah, take your time.
More specific, so, if you remove, if the rescinding happens, which I'm pretty much begging you guys to do, 'cause it's the right thing to do, and it needs to be done, the rescinding the veterans' van, as well as the skateboard park. So, we have every intention of doing both of those. We need to, we would, be left, and, and, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. We have two applications that are still pending, and those were for the capital improvements for information technology, which that process has, has been, has switched from a reimbursement to an advancement, back to reimbursement. So, those are pending. Assuming those go through, which I hope that they do, and are approved, we would have one million, six hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars left. And so, the Water Main project that you saw, I put forth, 'cause I know you love water projects. Those, that would be, I, I tried to look at all of the projects and look at the ones that I knew had satisfied procurement. And Paul Ferland is excellent with procurement, he's certified. I knew that was done. The work's been done. This is a project that started back in 2021. It's all encumbered, and most of it has been expended. So, I asked him to pull some stuff together and send it to me. And I was thinking about this before, like, if I had a crystal ball, and I could've seen into the future when I started back in 2022, and, you know, if you knew now what you knew, you knew then what you know now. I mean, I think I would've probably made up in, like, sixteen million to water. You know, like, one project, one application, done. 'Cause this, this is a lot, and it's just been such a sort of grueling process, and I think the goalposts have kind of changed at different points. So, this is just, in my opinion, I think it's, it ensures that all of our funds are not wasted, they're expended, we get what we need, and we can move forward with some of the projects that we talked about back with the city.
Okay, so, my last question is, and thank you, I feel vindicated, I really do.
I would've called you, yes. I wanted to do it on big grandstand.
Yeah. That was great. No, so, my last question is, so, the two hundred thousand we rescinded at the last meeting, where does that come into play in all of this?
Two hundred.
That was from the veterans, the two hundred fifty thousand, and then we had to rescind it, 'cause you weren't gonna be able to expend it?
And so, that is included in here, and so, all of that, my idea is that, that one point six million
Okay, it's all part of that.
Whoa, I'm sorry. Is gonna, is gonna go back to the city, and then we can reevaluate at that point. And I know that with your project, Counselor Pozo, I met with the art mobile, the, the board members for the art mobile, and had a great conversation on Monday about it. We're putting some stuff together. We'll submit that to the mayor and sit down and ask him about that.
Okay, great. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Kara, for coming down and explaining that. Appreciate it. Thank you. And thanks for all the hard work you do, too. Next, we have Ron Gagnon. Subject matter: Art Van, Greater Fall River Arts Association. Come on down, please. Is she Dana Barnes? And Dana Barnes, I apologize. Cross it off.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Council President, members of the city council. We got an invitation to be here tonight. We met before you a while ago, so I'm not sure if you guys have some questions. We met with Kara yesterday, but we were extended this invitation, and I hate to waste council time, but if there's anything you just wanted to ask us, we're waiting to hear about the funding, basically. I think that's where we're at, and we did meet with Kara yesterday. So, if you had any questions about the van
Can you try to speak into the microphone, please? Makes a big difference. Pull the microphone closer to you.
Pull the microphone closer.
Okay, better?
A little better.
Can you, can you hear me now?
So, anyway, I'm not quite sure why we're here, but if you have any questions, we're happy to answer.
Councilor C. Eight, Councilor Sampson.
I don't have a question, just a statement. I think your project is great, and I'm looking forward for it to going through, so however we can expedite this and make it happen for the city, I think it's great, and great job. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor C. Five, Councilor C. Two.
Yeah, I don't think anybody has any questions. It was rescinded. It'll come back, and they'll figure out a way to get it, to have that. figure out a way to get it, to have that. So I'm really happy that you met with Attorney Hum. She's very good at explaining things. And sorry to have you come down today without any questions. You know, I'd pick up the phone and call you if I had a question.
Yeah, I was like, I was kind of confused.
Yeah, I know. But thank you for taking the time to come down.
Can I just say one thing?
And we'll see what we can do. You can say, ah.
Not that I need to talk, but I'm the past president of the association. One of the things that we have tried with the association is to try to get art into places where kids are and adults are. This is a multi-generational kind of a project. We're not just going to kids where they are. We're, we're going to be, the goal is to go to places where adults are, maybe like Prosper Nursing Homes. I know for a fact that Townhouse Clubhouse is, like, wants to be the first person on the list to come, you know, when we, when we're able to get this. So it meets a great need that the city, I think, should be able to get itself wrapped around. We're not, we're not talking like we're gonna blow up anybody's budget, I don't think. But the benefit that the city would get by having it, it be around and about through all of the city events all year long, I think, is, is a very positive thing for the city. And I think that we, as, me, as a city, as a, a resident of the city, I'd like nothing more than to take this van all over the place, every single corner of the city, to do what we need to do with it. Kids love art. Our classes are full, and they still are clamoring for more. So we're looking to be able to provide some art for, for people who want to do it. So thank you very much, people. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Next, item number three, fiscal year 2024, quarter four budget report. It was referred on July 16, 2024. We're going to hold discussion. I know, we know who you are. Could both of you just please state your name and what department you went for the records, in case this first time watches at home?
Seth Aiken, City Administrator.
Bridget Allman, Director of Financial Services.
Counselor seat six, Counselor Partey.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, I just want to say, a compliment to the administration on the inactive core, items that are on, in this, in this quarterly update. I want to extend my gratitude and appreciation for looking at Globe Street, Sucker, Suckerbrook Drive Way and Government Center roof replacement to repurpose some of those idle funds. It's been something that I've been talking about personally for a while, I know with you. And I'm happy to see, this quarterly report shows $605,000 of idle money. So you've, you found over $313,000 to repurpose for other things. So I, I appreciate it. And I, and I know that's the next item on our agenda, but it somewhat speaks to the quarterly update. The only question I have, though, is that it remains $291,000 available, essentially in idle money in the capital projects. What sticks out the most to me is Streets and Highways Department homeowners of $204,000, if you go to your quarterly update under inactive capital projects. What is the plan with that $204,000?
So the, the, the next item on the agenda, and the, the money that's already been found, is very much the product of CFO Allman working with the department heads.
I'm sorry to interrupt. It wasn't found. It was obviously here for a while, because this goes back to, so, I don't want to correct, say, I don't want somebody misquoting you saying that we found money, because it's been here a while. There was capital projects that were idle. I just want to clarify that for the record. So the inactive capital projects, my specific question is the $204,000.
Sure. So anyway, I would, I would just want to say that the, the first batch that you're seeing here tonight is the result of CFO Allman working with each of the department heads in response to this council's recommendation. And there was a lot of hard work that went into that. She did a really wonderful job. I know that these are being looked at now, the balance. And I know that the CFO can speak in a little more detail to that, but I just want to give credit where credit's due. They've done a really good job doing, taking that first step.
So that 204,000, we're actually doing some more research on that, because it was money transferred from a few funds, and there's some journal entries. So we're trying to trace that back to the exact bond, so that I can then repurpose it, because it has to be of the same, like, if we borrowed it for 15 years, 20 years, 30 years, we have to repurpose it to something similar. So that was one we still haven't-
Well, is it, just out of curiosity, is it similar or like longevity projects? So if you repave a street, for example, and you plan to do that, as long as the purpose of that capital fund was to do streets for the life, no?
No, it's the life. So if you do something, so if you do something that has what they consider a useful life of 15 years, you bond for 15 years, you have to then repurpose it to something that has a similar useful life.
That's what I meant to say. I just didn't say it as eloquently as you did. So here's my thoughts. We have $291,000 available, and I understand there need to be, you know, length issues when it comes to the capital projects. But I really want to get these fire stations fixed. We've been talking about it for a while. This council years ago really, really put our necks, not on our necks out on the line, but we, we got that veterans' building done that needed to get done years ago. I really want to get these fire, fire stations fixed. Is there any way, I know that there's some, some additional funding through grants available, and that's in the works. Could we repurpose any of this to start fixing some of these stations?
So it depends on what we're fixing at the station. So I, I can give you that answer, and I'm not sure exactly-
That's fine.
-what you're just, what you're looking at to be fixed.
Just generally speaking, I mean, if you go down a center street-
To the counsel's point, anything that has a 15-year value you've repaired should qualify, correct?
Well, I mean, I, I would, I would say yes or no, because these are all a number of idle projects. But I just, I, I'm not expecting an answer today. But I would appreciate it if you could get back to me and the council to see if the 291, in the combination of all of these scheduled funds that are sitting idle, if we could use that 290 or a percentage of it, or some of it, to redo some of these fire stations.
Yeah, we can get you that answer. In addition to that, any of the work that's already planned in the fire stations, I think it'd be helpful for the council to know that, because community preservation funds are being brought to bear on the center station for some exterior, as well as some HVAC, and then EMS at the same time, is doing some additional ventilation and improvements of rooms. So there's some combined projects that are happening right now, at least at center. And we can get you a status on, on whether or not that those dormant funds might be used to either complete some of that work, or bring some of the other work up to standard.
And I appreciate that. I mean, I would reference the capital plan that we have going from June 30, 2025 to June 30, 2029. I know police have some requests, some capital needs. I also know that fire has some needs. Looks like some appliances that need to be replaced in some of their stations. It looks like some windows need to be replaced on Center Street and the west side of the building. It looks like replace 44 windows at the Globe Street Station. That isn't planning on being done until 2029. But there is, I guess, the start of some fire engines. I'm not expecting to repurpose that. But if we can start chipping away and reference this capital plan as a starting point for some of these idle funds, I think that would really go a long way. And I'm only using the fire departments because it's, it's, I'd probably, the calls I get would probably be more so fire-related in terms of needs building-wise, with the exceptions of the schools that have mold in them and all these other problems that they're running into. I, I think the fire stations would be a good use of that, if we can. So if you could get back to me, I'm not going to file a resolution, but if you could circle back to me and the council, maybe send an email to the clerk, I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Because almost $300,000 would do wonders in some of these capital needs that we have. So, I yield. Thank you.
Counselor seat two, did you have any of that?
Yep. Good evening. Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I find it interesting that some of the money you want to repurpose, 76,000 comes from the fire stations. Why don't we leave it with the fire stations? But I guess that's a discussion for later. So where do I begin? I noticed as I was going through this, on page 14, under the Police Department, during budget hearings, I had talked about reducing the budget for electricity in the Police Department and Streets and Highways. As it turns out, the Police Department only used 65.6% of their allocated money. So had we reduced the Police Department's budget by $50,000, it would still have come in, in the black at $25,570, and you would have expended only 75% of the money, as opposed to-
Can I respond?
Sure.
So what I, so again, this, this book was prepared on July 11, and we are still in the process of getting all, like, the final electricity bills. Wouldn't have been reflective of this yet. So I would have to look at what has been encumbered now for back to June 30 to see where that actually falls.
So we're in August, and you haven't gotten your June bill yet, was you saying?
Well, no, this, in order to meet the charter requirements, this, this was prepared on July 11.
Okay. So when do you typically get your June bill?
Actually, all, the electric bills come in on different dates. They all don't come in on the same date. So I, I don't know when the police one came in and when they entered it, but I will, I can look at that and get back to you.
Yeah, I'd like to know the final numbers on that. And the Streets and Highways as well, on page 22, I had suggested reducing that by 75,000. You'd still be in the black for $31,650. So basically, that's $125,000 that could have been used perhaps for something else.
So there is also some changes happening to the solar pilot agreements that we have, which is going to change how these net, the net metering is happening, and where we're receiving our credits. So we won't be seeing the same dollar value of credits going forward. So our electricity bills will increase. And that was just something I became aware of today.
Okay, the, all right. So if you can, as we move forward?
The point is well taken. Really, I mean, if, even if the July bills come in, some astronomical-
They're already, they're already in the, in budget 25.
Right. We're still not going to reach 100%. So it's, there's, there would have been a savings there. Absolutely understood.
Correct. All right, thank you. So let's go to expenses. Page two, City Administration, salaries permanent, 171,949. How many salaries is that?
I believe there's two salaries in there. There's my salary, and then there's the grant writer's salary, which, only half of which is paid for by the city, and I believe the other half is in the School Department.
Okay, okay, very good. Thank you. On page four, Auditor's Office expenses, other purchased services. The original appropriation was 30,000. The transfer is 35,000. The revised budget was 65,000. What were those services that were, what was, what were those funds, $65,000, used for?
So when we reallocated training to work with the Auditor's Office, and as we were still understaffed there, that, that's what that was for.
Okay, so did this money go to outside entities?
Yes.
Was this part of, who, who, where?
Some of that is-
Who provided this training, et cetera?
So Clifton Larson Allen provided some training, and again, also Ed Iacapone was working with our city auditor.
So between the two, it was $65,000?
I mean, there's a few other things in there, like shredding and some other things and, you know.
I don't think that took up much of the 65,000, however. In the Purchasing Department, so this shows the salaries permanent were 102,352. I have the page from the fiscal year ending June, well, the 2025 budget. Actually, you know what? My error, I took the wrong budget book, because that's at 120. So the person working in purchasing, I guess this is where my question comes in, the 102,000, who, so 69,480 was paid, to whom? Because that's higher than the person in that department's salary.
Yeah, so-
So who else did that money go to?
So we have someone that's stepping in and assisting with managing the purchasing, like, all the bid specs and filing all that. And we also have another union person in Treasury that we actually have doing some stuff in purchasing. So we allocated some of that salary from Treasury to purchasing.
So we have two people who have been paid out of salaries in purchasing, who are from other departments doing work in that department?
Yes.
Plus, plus the clerk.
Plus the clerk.
The full-time clerk.
So moving forward, are we going to have a purchasing agent, or are we going to keep piecemealing this?
We are not going to keep piecemealing this. We actually met this week to discuss how to move forward based upon the conversation that we had in front of this council, maybe, I don't know, six weeks ago, eight weeks ago, regarding the need for a purchasing agent, and the fact that the, the plan that I had put in place that I hoped would work was not as effective as it needed to be. And so there is likely going to be a request for this council to authorize the creation of essentially a project manager position. So not a full purchasing agent. The, the person in the Treasury Department would be doing the actual purchasing. She's trained, she's qualified, she's excellent, has proven herself. And then the, the project manager would assist with reading, opening, drafting of bids, proposals, all of the, the sort of higher-level clerk work with the support of the clerk that's in there. So the idea would be a, a three-person purchasing department with the creation of one additional role.
Three people, one full-time, two part-time?
Two full-time, one part-time?
Two full-time, two full-time, one part-time.
The part-time being somebody already employed by the city?
Yes, that's one of those people that received additional monies for doing purchasing. And over the past year, she's really done an excellent job and proven herself, you know, really sort of understanding how the process is supposed to work. She's been great.
And the $75,000 salary allocated in the 2025 budget is going to cover both of those people?
Right now, that $75,000 salary, you know what? I'm at a loss, because I don't have it in front of me. But I don't think that, I don't think the answer to that is yes. But I do think there is a way in which the intent is to divide that up. When we propose the role, we'll bring down a fiscal impact proposition, so you can understand exactly what it is we're looking at doing, and where that money is intended to come from.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't have it in front of me right now. I mean, I, I wanted to answer your questions. I probably spoke a little bit out of turn. But at the end of the day-
You don't have the total breakdown, or you don't have the-
That's right.
I have the page from the budget book, if that helps you.
So there's no intent to go over budget?
Right. There's no intent to increase the budget, but I need to be able to explain where the, where we intend for the money to come from. And right now, I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. Let me see. So page five, Assessor's Office, one, two, three, fourth line down, again, other services. We expended $68,000 in that office. That money went where, to whom, to what entity?
So I would have to get an exact breakdown, but I know we use, like, RRC, some outside appraisal services for personal property. We pay an attorney out of that line for certain things. And there is another consultant that does the bridge between the Assessor's Office and to do, to bridge to, so we can get to the tax bills. So there's a few different, I don't have the exact breakdown. I wasn't prepared, because I didn't know that that's what you were going to ask for. But there's a few things that are paid out of that line.
Okay. So basically, I would really, really appreciate it if I could get a breakdown of the things that I'm asking about tonight, because this, whenever it's just other services, other services, and then the answers are vague, we don't know who's getting the money, where it's going, what it's being spent on, doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy.
The two major things are, are going to be appraisals. But the other thing is representation before the appellate tax board. So when there's an appellate tax case where a taxpayer challenges the city, and the city has to represent itself before the ATB, we have counsel for that. So those are going to be the two major ones, but we'll get you a breakdown.
Okay, and that would be outside counsel?
Outside counsel. It's a very, ATB is a really specialized thing, and there's only a few lawyers locally that really practice in that realm. I wouldn't do it. I don't, I don't know anything about it. I think Attorney Gilby is telling me he wouldn't do it either. It is, it's very niche.
Yeah, I don't doubt that. It, it's just, I, I would prefer to be more specific and be more knowledgeable of what's really going on in our, within our budget, that's all. Page eight, on the Law Department, Other Professional Services. I'm going to assume that was outsourcing, because we have certain cases that we needed to outsource.
Give me a second, I'm finding it. Okay, so this is, it doesn't have a heading, because it starts on the previous page, Other Professional Services?
Correct.
Yep. So that is comprised of three things. That's comprised of outside counsel for some litigation, some investigations. So there are times, both in internal personnel investigations, as well as external investigations pursuant, or in support of civil cases, where we hire an investigator. And then finally, we, I believe, took on, this would have appeared in the fourth quarter as well, services to help us deal with public records requests. Because with some of the, the changes about a year ago or two years ago, with regard to police discipline records, and some other changes that post, the, the Police Officer Standards and Training Association has put in place, the amount of public records requests has just probably multiplied by five or six. So we have services that help us with that.
Actually, honestly, I think, I think public records requests has gone through the roof in the last couple of years in every department.
Yeah.
It's absolutely incredible.
But we have the, we have them filtered through law to make sure that there's any exceptions, we're citing those exceptions. And if there's anything that has to be sent out with redactions, we're doing that redaction.
Page 11, which is the very, is the next page right here, on, on the Elections Office, their budget went over by almost $29,000. What was the driving force for that?
So there's a ton of overtime that comes along with, and anytime there's, there's an election, because we now have mail-in voting, you know, we have extended voting hours, and those have increased significantly over the last two years. Their overtime has gone through the roof. The thing to know about that is that the vast majority of that actually gets reimbursed by the Secretary of State. So, not the Secretary of State, the auditor. The Auditor's Office reimburses Elections Offices for much of their overtime and staffing associated with complying with the elections law.
The overtime line item only represents seven thousand of the twenty-eight thousand. You have salaries permanent that went over by four, forty, let's see, well, that went over by forty-three thousand. The bottom line, once everything gets shaken out, is twenty-eight thousand. What's PRF forward slash ADM?
Administration, so there's, there's part-time people they bring in during the elections to deal with all the mail-in ballots and so it's like a additional professional services, admin.
Okay, so that's additional services, that's not overtime, doing some of your mailing your ballots, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, the overtime is just the folks that are trained to actually do elections work. The other folks are, are doing the more ministerial stuff.
And lastly. Page twenty-eight. Prevent care, public health, health department, salaries permanent. Original appropriation was sixty-eight thousand, eight twenty-nine. Then there was a transfer of sixty-three, eight twenty-nine, which brought the revised budget to zero. But then sixty-three, eight twenty-nine was expended. Why would that happen?
So I did talk about this with the auditor. There was, some of this has to do with the reclass. I mean, there was people that moved around and then like where they were actually expending them. So I believe that through payroll, it was being expensed here and, and there needs to just be some journal entries to clean this up. That's part of our year-end process that we're working on.
So you're going to see something later on tonight, which is a transfer from inspectional services for minimum housing to health and human services. So minimum housing moved from inspectional services to health. They're agents of the, of the Board of Health. They, they execute the health code, so we moved that with the approval of the council. We did that without actually moving the line item in the budget. So that, to me, and I'm going to verify this and I'll let you know, but it looks to me like because that happened in the fourth quarter without us then making the, the budget change, which was an oversight on my part, they then lived in health and human services without health and human services having the budget to do it.
Yeah, because it was taken out of their budget and then put back in their budget.
So we have some dispute as to what that looks like, so we'll find out for you. So that was what my understanding was when I looked at it, but CFO feels like there, there's actually more to it than that, so we'll get you an answer. I apologize. Unclear. Okay.
Yeah, because that originally was in the budget and then it was taken out of the budget and put back in the budget.
Right.
So to me, if it was going from here to here, it would have been a different sequence.
That's true. That makes, that makes sense. The, the mill inspectors also moved at the beginning of the year, the beginning of the fiscal year, last fiscal year, so that may attribute to it. So it's a little confusing. I apologize without, for not having a clear answer. I'll get you one.
Yeah, so I guess, I mean, the way I'm looking at it is if, if people are moving into my department, the money's not going out of my department.
Right.
And that's what happened.
I don't believe it went out of her department. I think, I believe it just moved to a different org within the health department. So I will get you the answers on that. I mean, that's part of our year-end cleanup. But we did have quite a bit of movement around on the org chart within the last year. So sometimes, you know, payroll will automatically have something associated when it charges and I think there was just a disconnect, so that's part of our year-end cleanup.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat seven, Counselor Potte.
Just a quick question. Is there a central key that defines all of these codes that we could get when we review this budget book?
Essential key as?
Essentially that defines what each code line item is outside of the titles. Because I know to Counselor Deion's point, some of them are just like letters. They don't really reflect. Is there like a key you could give us?
So there's not a consistent key. We're actually, we're, I'm, we're working on uniform, making this more of like a uniform chart of accounts.
Yeah.
And actually, yes, the auditor and the budget person, they're working on changing and elaborating some of these lines. So the way this was printed, that wasn't completed. We're looking to hopefully get that better so that these descriptions will be better for quarter ones.
Okay, excellent.
I don't know that a key would actually be helpful, weirdly, because there's, there's a, there's a limited universe of, of labels that go with line items, right?
Or even, or even a more clarified, like the CFO said, a clarified chart of accounts.
That may, yeah, that may be the, the better way to go, like actually have our departments sort of identify what they mean by these things because different departments may mean different things.
Yeah.
And we're trying to normalize that.
If, if we could do that, that would be fabulous.
Yeah, so right, like right now, like I can't run like, you know, electricity across one code for every department. So we're going to, we're trying to fix that so that, you know, electricity's object is across the board.
Got it.
So that way we could look at things, like big, bigger picture things.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Analysis, but.
Excellent. So you're planning for by quarter one?
Well, we're, we're, yeah, I mean, I can't promise that it'll all be done, but we're, we're already looking at printing like with a long description and, and proving these descriptions.
Cool, thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Debbie, no further questions. Counselor C five, Counselor V.
I just have a comment to make. As far as the purchasing agent goes, I think we need a definite purchasing agent. I don't know, you're going to call it a project manager or whatever. Let's call it what it is because it gets confusing. We have a project manager now and Mr. Olivera. You know, we changed the names of people and I don't know what the heck anybody's doing. The other thing is, in the assessor's office, with all of that that's going on, I think Counselor Deion asked, you know, who comes in, who does this stuff? And Matt Thomas does most of the work within the assessor's department and he's paid. Is he paid through a ten ninety-nine or do we have a contract with him to do certain things?
To, so within the assessor's office, I believe he's a ten ninety-nine.
How about everywhere else?
So tax title, he's paid out of tax title.
Out of tax title.
Right. Within the lot apartment, I believe he has a fee agreement with the lot apartment. So it's, it's.
So it varies in different places?
It varies in different places. I think the fee is the same and it's, it's incredibly low for what he does. The only variation is tax title. Tax title is a whole different thing because everything comes out of tax title.
Yeah, the tax title, I know, I have all of those here. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Could you do us a favor? Could you give us a total of what the, Matt Thomas's income would be of all the things he does for the city and all the different departments and all the different ways he's being paid?
Sure.
Just present it, I'd just like to see that.
From twenty-three, Mr. President?
I don't care, twenty-three, twenty-four, whatever.
Well, from twenty-three till present was a hundred and forty-eight thousand.
Thank you, Counselor. She just saved you some time, Seth.
I'll just verify just to make sure.
Appreciate it.
But that, that could be.
All right, Debbie, no further questions. Well, thank you for coming down. Actually, could you do the same for our friend Ed Iacapone as well? Just curious. She's made that as well. Thank you. So is that official? Okay, thank you. I heard his name pop up ten minutes ago. All right. They just informed me that Ed Iacapone is no longer working for the city. Although his name was mentioned.
I'm sure he's happy to be retired.
I'm sure he was. Next, we have transfers and appropriations.
Do we need the CFO for that?
If you have questions. In accordance to the provisions of Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-two of the Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend the following appropriations to your honorable body. That the sum of one hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars be in the same as hereby appropriated to health and human service salaries from inspectional service salaries due to reorganization of city departments.
So moved.
Motion to adopt has.
Well, that would be a full council.
It's there.
I'm sorry.
It's already a full council.
Right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Hold the discussion.
Yeah, so these are for discussions. All three correct? In accordance with provisions of Chapter, item fourteen A, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-two of the Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend the following appropriations to your honorable body. That the sum of twenty-two thousand, five hundred be in the same as appropriated to the city council expenses from stabilization fund due to new outside auditor contract awarded. No discussions? Counselor C one, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess my, my question would be why we are using the stabilization fund versus the reserve fund?
Could you come down, please?
Because my understanding it was going to come back. It was going to come back.
So I think we had, we had a line item still for the reserve. It's like eight hundred thousand or?
There's about two hundred, there was two hundred thousand left in that, but we also have, the contract with ASME is going to be coming down with the fiscal impact, so I.
So that, you're using the?
Yeah, I was going to use that.
Okay, all right. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions? Item fourteen B, that the sum of three hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars be in the same as hereby appropriated to EMS capital from the EMS stabilization fund. Are there any questions?
No.
No questions? I'll entertain a motion to.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Finance. Motion to adjourn finance has been made in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Finance is now adjourned. Do we need to give you any time to get the paper to the council?
Go right in.
Pass it on to them.
Go right into full council.
She has, she has the letter of opposition.
During the public meeting, there was one individual that had opposing one of the, I think it was the honorable body request. Item number six, so she's just going to pass out the letters of opposition.
That's on our full council agenda, correct? Okay, so we can, it's on our full council agenda, right? So we could address that then, right?
We can, we can refer it, address it. City council, please come to order. The clerk will call the roll.
Counselors Cadeen?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Gilby?
Here.
Ferrera?
Here.
Ponte?
Here.
Reposo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing pursuant to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised, such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, is not deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Can we take six through nine together?
Second.
Motion to take items six, seven, eight, and nine has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm clerk.
Item six is a communication from the mayor and proposed Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of one million, six hundred thirty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars for the water main replacement project.
Motion to approve.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven is a communication from the mayor and a request to rescind the Bristol County ARPA proposal regarding Lafayette's skateboard cart rehabilitation, which was approved on May fourteenth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eight is the mayor's communication and request to rescind the Bristol County ARPA proposal regarding the veterans ban, which was approved on January ninth.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And item number nine is the mayor's communication in order to transfer unexpended bond proceeds totaling three hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and one cent from the following projects to assist with structural repairs of the Pearl and Third Street garages. The first is the amount of one hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents for the government center roof replacement. The second, ninety-seven thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents for Sucker Brook driveway crossing. And the third is seventy-six thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and ten cents for Globe and Flint Street fire station roof and doors.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made in seconded. On the motion, Counselor C two.
Yeah, this is where my question came in. We're talking about capital projects and needing windows and different things within the, the fire department, but yet we're going to transfer unexpended fire station monies to a different project. Why wouldn't we keep it within that to do the work we need to do in the fire stations?
Want to come down, Seth?
Motion to waive the rules, we need that.
Second.
Motion to waive rules has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I mean, to move it out and then look for monies later to put it back in, doesn't make any sense to me, but perhaps.
So from what I understand, Seth Aiken, city administrator, from what I understand with regard to roof and doors, those projects were completed or, well, I'm not giving you an option. They, they were, in some instances, they were completed, the roof. The doors were actually paid for in part by EMS. So EMS, because they have ambulances, rescues at different fire stations, I believe they agreed to pay for six of the high-speed doors. You'll notice like the red doors on the center station, those go up in a matter of seconds as opposed to the old doors, which also go up in a matter of seconds, but more seconds. And so with the doors, I don't think the money was needed. With the roof, the, there was leftover monies. And from what I understand, the way in which that money was set aside, it can't necessarily be transferred over to some other project at a different station. I don't necessarily know exactly what the reason was, but I know the reason it's left over is because it was either extra and it wasn't entirely used for the roof project or didn't need to be used for the door project.
But, but the monies can be used on parking garages that have no doors and windows.
That's a fair point. So from what I understand, there's something about the structural aspect of what's being done to both the Pearl and Second Street garages that has the appropriate lifespan. And there's no sufficient design work done yet on any of the fire requirements that would, we'd be able to show, hey, you know, here is a project that has a fifteen or fifty or whatever your lifespan. Whereas we already have the design done on the second Pearl Street garages, project's ready to go so we can transfer, transfer the money, the bond proceeds and use it based upon a project that we know not only its purpose, but we also know its lifespan based on design.
And again, this, and this has nothing to do with that, I, I, that I oppose doing the work because obviously both garages are, are a revenue source for the city. So it has nothing to do with that. It was just trying to understand, was it apples to apples, apples to oranges, and why?
Yeah, why add a step, right? Like move the money and then have to find other money to move back. But from what I understand, that in terms of shovel-ready projects, there are, the, the ones that are, would apply to fire stations are already funded with community preservation funds and EMS funds. Other projects, there's certainly an acknowledged need. There's just no design work. And we had the work done on Third and Second Street, ready to go. It's needed. And I think there's also a critical need specifically on Pearl Street from a, of a structural nature.
Yeah, because I believe they're, they're still not able to use the third floor.
That's true.
Right. Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Potte.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, I want to again compliment, but, my compliment is I appreciate you looking into these idle funds. But I did say that the fire departments do have capital needs and to my colleagues, point in seat two, she is making a really good point and there's really no certainty coming from you because there's a lot, you don't know the answers and respectfully to some of the questions that she's answering you. So what I think the appropriate thing to do is, and I would just offer this as a friendly suggestion to my colleagues, is to address the govern, to approve, if we can, the transfer of the roof and Sucker Brook driveway. But I think we should refer the Globe Street and Flint Fire Station roof and doors to full, to the Committee on Finance, have the chief come down and find out if there is a need to keep it within the fire department within that purview.
Sure.
Because I'm, look, again, I'm going back to the capital projects. Globe Street Fire Station needs forty-four windows. Now, I'm not sure if that's going to be any CPA funds or CPC funds or community preservation funds are going to be used or any kind of grant. That does project out to two thousand and twenty-nine in your capital plan, so I wonder if we could chop some of that off there. I can, you know, the slated in twenty twenty-five is fifteen thousand dollars of fire station appliance replacement for washer and dryers and then going into twenty twenty-six. two thousand and twenty-six, we need to replace and integrate an SBA breathing apparatus, and we need sixty-eight windows at their center street, east and west side of the building. So, uh, if I could just, so that we can do this the right way and do it once, um, I'm gonna make a motion now that, um, we refer nine, I guess...
Seat?
C, Globe Street and Fire Station roof and doors to the Committee on Finance for a more elevated conversation. I make that in the form of a motion, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Is it the...
Hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion has been made and seconded, on the motion, Council, seat one, everyone else you had your hand up.
Um, I guess I would, I, I think all three should be, uh, referred if we're gonna hold it up, just, 'cause I, I, again, I don't know what the total cost is for the, uh, Pearl Street garage. I don't know if it's the entire three hundred thirteen thousand that's needed, or you already have some money appropriated. So I, what I'd hate to do is send seventy-six thousand dollars over there and it not be enough, and then we've got seventy-six thousand that's been transferred over and just sitting there and not being used, and then we're back before us trying to transfer that seventy-six thousand out to another project, so, um, I, I just prefer if we're gonna fall with this over, just let, let's do all three and have those conversations in terms of, 'cause, listen, we may decide that the seventy-six thousand should be, uh, sent over to the fire department, so... Motion to refer item nine to the Committee on Finance in its entirety. I'll withdraw my previous motion.
Second.
Motion to withdraw has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
New motion is to refer the entire...
Item nine.
Item number nine to the Finance Committee.
Yes.
Motion has been made?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So, just so I understand, is it the councils intend to direct where that money goes once they figure out the status of the projects? Just, uh, just so I, I can have the right people here?
Yeah, yeah, no, if I may?
Yeah, sure. I believe, I believe the attention was at the fire chief, come to explain to what the reason for the fire department would be.
Yeah, to, to the president's point, that would be one person that we'll have to invite, but to our colleague in seat one's point, I think we just need to make sure our CFO is here, and maybe, um, whoever's responsible for city hall repairs to come down and make sure nothing's needed at, I guess, city hall, so that, that would be the only two people, I think.
Just, just to be clear, I think that identifying Pearl and Second Street Garage is an acknowledgement of what the priority projects are at the city, that, that, these are the things that, that he's identified as need to be done first, uh, and then the other stuff is certainly coming down, and we're trying to forecast and plan, but I'll invite that entire group. We'll get the fire chief, facilities, um, CFO, uh, I'll be here, just in case.
Sure. I, I got a, I got a question. Do you remember, I, I don't think you were here, but didn't we transfer those to the redevelopment authority and they transferred them back to the city?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Because if, we were looking for the revenue opportunity and the parking garages bring that, but I, I recall, recall that Jazel and his people sent that, uh, moved that over to the redevelopment authority, and then what, what happened after that? Did we move him back in?
Point of information.
And I guess the question is, uh, I'm sorry, and I guess the question is, should we re-have that conversation again, um, to bring them back to the redevelopment authority?
So I was on the redevelopment authority at that time. Um, I don't remember what year that the city, um, put it in the RDA's hands. I believe it was prior to Jazel's administration, but don't quote me on that.
Bob Correa.
All right, during the Correa admin, the other Correa administration, the first. And the RDA, um, I don't remember if the city asked that we transfer it back, or if we approached the city and said, "We'd like to put it back in, in your, your hands," and the city decided that, yes, it could be, it was a revenue source, it was worth taking that, worth the investment to bring them up to code, and so, uh, the vote was taken by the RDA to transfer it, and the city accepted it.
Hmm, okay.
That was back in...
The second Correa administrations took it back. The Correa, too. All right, I yield, thanks.
Yeah.
To my knowledge, there was structural damage on the third floor.
There still is.
Correct. No one could afford to fix it, and I did have no funds to fix it. It was gonna cost them a month and a month.
That's why they gave it back to us.
So they just gave it back to the city.
Didn't have to. They chose to. Granted, it was not in good shape.
I didn't say they had to or not, I just said they gave it back.
Right.
Could I ju...
Counselor, seat two.
That I yield, sorry.
Counselor, seat one.
So, so I guess, to my colleague's point, in terms of, in hearing what the administration, administration is saying in terms of the priority obviously being Pearl Street, um, I, I, I think what would be helpful, and I think what my colleague is looking for, is, is part of the capital plan coming down, you know, we obviously get a wish list of items that, that they're looking for, for capital items from each department. Obviously, when you look at the bottom line, it's well into the, to the hundreds of millions of dollars to, to actually fund this. If we could, I guess, even for the next capital improvement plan, get what the anticipated funding mechanism would be in terms of, or, I guess, what we feel, uh, we wanna fund for the, for the fiscal year. This way, we can, we can have those conversations, 'cause I, I think part of that would take, take some of this away to, to say, hey, listen, you know, obviously, it's Pearl Street, uh, when we go through, I'm sure there's a number of capital items that are on the fire department, and we can tick off, but we've, we've gotta be able to, you know, when we're checking off these, these boxes, compare it to other departments and see, obviously, what, what's the real needs are, and I, I think it just makes it easier when we're making these transfers, so, you know, a, a total plan, and, you know, this is what we'd like to see funded for, you know, fiscal year of twenty-five, twenty-six, whatever it may be.
How much is in the checkbook?
No, no, but I think that's part, I mean, that's, that's part of it, and I know one of my colleagues is like, "Why are we gonna CPC?" So we potentially use CPC money to leverage some of the capital items, uh, use some of those turned-back monies and things like that, so...
I agree. How much money do we have in checkbook? How much are we gonna spend?
And that, and that way, we just know on a, on a, whatever the fiscal year is, is how much we anticipate, and, and whether or not we're gonna go out to borrow for, for additional monies. I, I just think it would be helpful for us on that.
Great. Any further questions, Counselor? Do you yield, Counselor?
Um, I just have one more.
Hold on. Do you yield, Counselor, seat one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I do.
Thank you. Counselor, seat six, I have a question.
Thank you. This question is for you, Mr. President. So in the early part of the, uh, council meeting, I, I wanted to kinda hear from the administration on what their plans are for the rest of the idle money. So do you feel it would be appropriate to have that discussion at that time in council then, or do you want it preferred that I file a resolution? Because there's another almost three hundred thousand dollars, so because it's all coming from there...
I don't think there's a need for you to file a resolution, 'cause I think we should have discussions on the entire...
All right, just wanna make sure you're gonna allow it, because it's really, it would, you know...
Yeah, I never stopped being ready for discussion, these are relative to our own agenda there. It's fine.
I do appreciate the heads up, though. We'll be prepared for that.
If you can be for that meeting, then it gets referred, because I'd, I'd really like to dig into that.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat two.
Yeah, I only have one more question. Uh, sh, would, would we also want the director of traffic there, where it involves the, the two garages, and that falls under her pre, uh, purview?
Counselor, see, why not?
Yeah, there's enough seats. I think we're fine.
Okay, with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much, Seth, for coming in.
Thank you.
Ma'am clerk?
Item number one is a communication...
Did we end up voting on that? Or just wanna make sure?
It is referred to Finance.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
Did we do a full vote?
No, we had discussion.
You referred the motion, it was seconded, but we didn't take the vote, 'cause we had discussion.
Correct, then we had discussion, and we, we didn't vote, because we had discussion prior to the vote.
Correct.
Motion had to be made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Certain vote on it now.
Item number one is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Alexis Anselmo to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate member.
Roll call. Mr. President?
Yes, Counselor, seat six.
I'm gonna be abstaining from this vote.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, seat ten, do you have your hand up, too?
Yeah, I just had a question. In regards to the open positions on different boards and commissions, the city's website reflects a list that's updated as of April second of what is currently open. Um, I'm probably in the assumption it's old at this point, so can we get an updated list of the current open boards and commission positions that are available? 'Cause what's on this agenda, what's on the city's website, doesn't match. I, I was just looking for an answer.
Yes.
Yeah, is that, thank you. I yield.
You want an answer from the clerk or from me?
No, nobody said anything, that's why, just...
I think she nodded ahead.
Thank you, Allison. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Ma'am clerk?
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded.
Roll call.
On the, on the motion, roll call.
On the motion to confirm, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Ponti?
Abstain.
Repouzo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
And President Kamara?
Yes.
Item two is a, is the mayor's request in an order approving a conservation restriction with the trustees of the reservation for ten forty-six Blossom Road.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is a communication from the mayor in an order accepting a donation in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from the estate of Joseph Feitelberg.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. On the motion, Counselor, seat five, Counselor...
We do send thank you letters to everyone, don't we?
We will definitely thank Mr. John Feitelberg, very generous, on behalf of this father.
Very generous.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is the mayor's communication in order accepting a donation in the amount of one thousand dollars for the children's section of the Fall River Public Library from Richard and Deborah Daner.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and they will also get a thank you letter.
Excuse me.
Counselor, seat two?
Yeah, I just have a question. Um, in terms of accepting cash donations, um, it was very nice, Barrett's on the waterfront, paid for the fireworks this year, but yet that was never sent down to us. Who paid? Barrett's. Uh, Barrett's waterfront hosted Fuel the Fourth Mondays from April twenty-ninth to June twenty-fourth, where twenty percent of the food sales were donated to the city to make this year's celebration shine brighter than ever. A big thank you to Barrett's waterfront for their generosity.
Do you yield, Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor, seat one, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, just point of information, I, I think Community Development Agency typically pays for the, I know, I know funding comes from CDA, um, so it might be in their budget, not necessarily the city's budget for adoption.
Well, maybe we need to know.
So...
Could go to CDA, yeah.
'Cause it said it was donated to the city.
We're talking about the library right now, Counselor, can we?
No, I understand that, but it's cash donations we're talking about, so just trying to get...
Feel free to file a resolution and find out how those things are handled and where they went.
It's mass general law.
I know it is, but are you saying it happened or it didn't happen?
It happened. They gave the money, and they didn't send it before the council, so that's what I wanted to get to the bottom of.
But the council just said it's Community Development Block, right?
I think, I just...
I think we're all thinking right now.
We'll find out.
No one has the answers, I think we're all guessing and speculating. Ma'am clerk?
Item five is the communication from the mayor in an order accepting a donation of historical furniture from Sally Lawler. Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. President, is that going to the historical museum? Is that going over to Michael at the historical?
I'm not sure what they said it was going.
It didn't say specific. I don't want a historical piece of furniture in city hall, it should be...
No.
At the museums. Very pretty piece of furniture, but I'll call tomorrow and check.
Good idea, Counselor. Motion to accept has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item ten is a communication and proposed ordinance regarding the membership of the historical commission.
Motion to refer to ordinances?
Motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item eleven is a communication from the mayor and, uh, communication regarding the anticipated timeline of proposed ordinance relating to short-term rentals.
Motion to refer to committee on ordinances?
Wait a minute.
Seconded.
Motion to refer to committee on ordinance and legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the communication from the mayor regarding the anticipated timeline of a proposed ordinance relating to unauthorized camping in public property.
Motion to refer to committee on ordinances?
Second.
Motion to refer to the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item thirteen is the mayor's, uh, letter in order appropriating the sum of one hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars transferred from the inspectional services salaries to health and human services salaries.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fourteen are financial orders, the first, that the sum of twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars be in the same as hereby appropriated to the city council expenses from the stabilization fund.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the second, that the sum of three hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars is appropriated to the EMS capital from the EMS stabilization.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item fifteen is the Planning Board's recommendation to approve Draper Street extending from Globe Mills Ave. northerly to Atlantic Boulevard.
Motion accept and place on file.
Seconded.
We do have one slight change to the order. The engineer suggested that the wording be changed to Draper Street extending from Globe Mills Avenue northerly to Terminus and southerly to Terminus. So if we could adopt as amended.
Motion to adopt as amended.
To Terminus.
That was a motion to adopt.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item sixteen is the Traffic Commission making recommendations to the ordinances.
Motion to refer to Committee on Ordinance.
Motion to refer to Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on July twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Counselor Kadim and Sampson absent and not voting.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble, second.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
On adoption of the emergency preamble, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
And President Kamara?
Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on July twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading with Counselors Kadim and Sampson absent and not voting, this is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass through first reading.
Seconded.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on July twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading with Counselors Kadim and Sampson absent and not voting, this is the one-year demolition delay for city-owned property.
Motion to pass through first reading.
Motion to pass through first reading has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on July twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended with Counselors Kadim and Sampson absent and not voting, these are the trolley fees.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended.
Seconded.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended has been made and seconded, on the motion, council seat two.
Yeah, when this first came before us, we had, well, I know I did, made recommendations that children, that some of these, these, these fees be amended. So we have a special trolley tour, a child, so if, if, if a senior citizen wants to take their five or six, four or five-year-old grandchild on a special trolley ride, it's going to cost that person fifty dollars. I think that's ridiculous. I personally would like to see either senior citizen discounts, children five and under are free no matter what the circumstance, veterans get a discount, or just do a general, if you're a resident of the city, you get a discount. So with that said, I would like to make a motion that this go back to ordinance for further discussion, hopefully it'll be a full, all five members will be able to be there instead of only three, and hopefully some modifications be made. So I'd like to put that in a form of a motion.
Motion referred back to the Committee on Ordinance and Legislation has been made, is there a second?
Second.
And seconded. On the motion, council seat five, counsel Pror.
I chaired that meeting, and there was a lot of discussion about that. One of the things that we felt was for the upkeep of that vehicle to pay a driver, et cetera, that's kind of what it would cost. Five dollars wasn't a lot, and what we did do for, for kids was, and Counselor Reposo said, if any of the schools in Fall River want to use the trolley to bring a student group to someplace in the city of Fall River, let that be the Derby House, the Children's Museum, anywhere in the city, that they would do it at a cheaper rate. I think it was like a hundred dollars to rent that. The twenty-five dollars is if there's a special event. Now, I know that the trolley is having a trolley karaoke or something, they're going to be singing there tomorrow night, but if there's special events that they're going to be attending, you go away for special events and bring kids, and it does cost money. You have to think of, you know, the insurance and the driver and everything else. We, we're doing it as low as we can possibly do it. I go out of town to different events here and there, we pay. For some reason in Fall River, you know, we never want to pay for anything, this is just a nominal fee. It's not, you know, it's just for the maintenance, the upkeep, we have to. I mean, sometimes I feel like, you know, we want to give tin and get gold, it doesn't happen that way. And I think it was a unanimous vote, so if one more member was there, I don't think it's going to change the vote of how people felt after we heard all the discussion of the drivers, et cetera. That's all I have to say. With that, I yield.
Counselor seat seven, counsel Pror.
Yeah, ju- just to recap some of the, because I, I had led a lot of the discussion and concern about it. One of the questions I had back at the ordinance meeting was about the definition of what a special trolley tour and event was, as opposed to a normal, just take the trolley and go around to the different points of the city. So that was one of the things. I did bring up your point about senior citizens and, and veterans, that was discussed as well. But the big piece that was added to this, which is ma- mainly a result of the amendment, was the trolley rentals for schools in Fall River. So the rationale behind it was, you know, if we want to take a group of, a, a class of students to different local field trip opportunities, to use their trolley for six hundred dollars for a half day is double the price of what a school bus would cost to go around the city. So that was the rationale behind introducing the, the school, I'll call it a school rate, per se, which is a lot more affordable for, you know, any school in Fall River to go to the Battleship or whatever other historical places there are in the city. Like on a four-hour rental, which is in, in school land that I live in, you know, an eight-to-twelve field trip is completely reasonable for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to take a, not only a class of students, but also a trolley, which is a unique experience to students in the city as it is. So that was kind of the recap of that conversation. I yield.
Thank you, counsel, council seat two?
Yeah, I don't have any issue with the, the school rental. I have no issue with that a- at all. But I know, and you're right, people go out of town and you pay whatever you have to pay wherever you go. But I do know, I don't know of any place I've ever been that children five and under are free. I don't care what they're doing, I don't care if you're in a park, I don't care. Most two-year-olds or one-year-olds are going to be sitting in their parents' lap, they're not even taking up a seat. And I get it's a, it's a very small amount of money, it's just the principle of it that bothers me. And, you know, people may, and people living on twenty thousand dollars a year, you know, five dollars to a lot of people in here, you put a match to it. That five-dollar bill means a lot to that senior citizen who's only living on twenty thousand a year, that's what I'm looking at. I just feel bad, I just think there should be a, a, I don't know, I don't know. I, I, I couldn't be collecting tickets and, and, and be taking money for two-year-olds and three-year-olds, that, that's just something I couldn't do. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, I kind of agree. One thing I do want to say, if it does go back to the ordinance committee, please give us an age of what seniors will be, some are fifty-five and over, some are sixty-five and over, some are sixty, depends on.
There's sixty-five and over, I don't care.
I just want us to come back, right now, there's, I mean, there's no age because there's no course for it, but in different places, seniors have different ages. Counselor seat six, counsel Patti.
Yeah, thank you. I think this just needs to be cleaned up, I think a lot of the work is good, but to my colleague's point, this needs some more clarity in its, in its ordinance, so I'm going to be supporting a motion to refer it back to the Committee on Ordinance for some cleanup and then get back here. Should be pretty easy.
Should be simple. I yield, thank you, counsel seat seven?
I guess my only concern is, by doing this, what it, what's the holdup going to be for anything the trolley is currently doing?
Guess it'd be as soon as you have the meeting, I don't know.
I know, but it's, I mean, this has already been.
What's the trolley doing right now?
It's for free to everybody.
Well, that's one piece, but if they're doing, if they're planning any special events between now and when this gets passed, now we're delaying something that we've been waiting all summer to get off the ground and go with. So my, my, my counter suggestion would be that we could always amend this after the fact or file a resolution to amend it in ordinances, after, after the fact.
All right, so we can amend this right now, if we really wanted to.
Do that as well. I just don't want to hold up a good thing with the season as it's wrapping up.
I understand, but I'd ra- I'd rather get it right than do it and then have to do it again because we didn't get it right the first time.
Understood, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, do you have your hand up, we got a counsel seat one, you want to chime in, you haven't spoken yet, one.
So through you, Mr. President, did, did my colleague state that there was a, a school rate?
Yeah, it's, it's the, the fourth section at the bottom, it says trolley rentals for schools located.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should probably re-behave her.
Yeah, that's, that's what we added in ordinance committee.
Okay. No, because I was looking at each one, and I was like, I don't see a, a school rate rental, but I, I get it, okay. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, counsel, it's, counsel seat eight, counsel Sampson.
So the trolley is having an event, the karaoke on the trolley, I heard today, it's like a sold-out event. Does that mean they're paying the rates that are here that we haven't approved yet, is that what you're talking about?
I don't know.
Is it?
It's only a free reading, isn't it?
It'll be for free, there's no rate.
So it's, so that, so is it, is it a free event, because if it's, are these free events, then we're not holding anything up?
Well, point of information, isn't this passed through first reading, so you still got multiple, we got one more meeting. Yeah.
Right, so.
Correct. That's why we can amend it.
No, no, I, I said that, but it doesn't, it doesn't get finalized tonight, I guess.
Well, yeah, I'm, no, I, I understand that, but Counselor Reposo was saying that there's events, but there, I heard.
Future events.
Well, there's a future event coming, it's a karaoke on the trolley, and it's like sold out, so what are the rates on it? I could just question, are they the rates that we are approving or need to approve, or?
Can't be, I'm going to say that.
Maybe it's a free event, so then, then that, that negates the, you know, things coming up, maybe it's, it's all free. If it's free, it's for me. So I don't know, I just, my question, nobody's, you know, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two?
It isn't necessary, but then the other option could be that with the encampment ordinance and this, we could always have a special city council meeting just to vote on those two things. Possibly there's a relevance, with that, I yield.
Okay, just let's clarify a few things now, all right? The trolley event that we're talking about is happening tonight, and it's for free.
There we go.
And getting back to Barrett's on the Waterfront, they made a donation, donation to CD rec, and CD rec paid for the fireworks. Had nothing to do with City of Fall River.
Very good.
That's why it never came before us.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to send this back to ordinance, that is second.
There is a motion on the floor.
Roll call, let's go.
Roll call.
Sure, counsel?
Yeah, I'm good, just, just.
Motion has been made and seconded to refer back to the ordinance committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's go to roll call, fine, roll call.
On referral to the ordinance committee, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Reposo?
No.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
Yes, motion carries.
Committee on Ordnances and Legislation at a meeting held on July twenty-third voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended with Counselors Kadim and Sampson absent and not voting, this is the property maintenance ordinance.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended.
Second.
Motion to pass through first reading as amended has been made and seconded, on the motion, council seat six, counsel Patti.
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to commend the ordinance committee on this because this has been needed for a very, very long time. This has been something that needed to be clarified, I'm sure the Corporation Council had some work in this as well, so this is something that when it comes to buildings and maintenance and nuisance properties and vacant properties and responsible parties, it has been years that we've been advocating to get this cleaned up, and this council and this ordinance committee did a great job of doing that, so I want to commend that, and I'm looking forward to supporting this as we go forward, I yield.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor seat six, I'm sorry, counsel seat five, counsel Pror.
I know this is going to the ordinance, you know, we went to the ordinance committee on some of this stuff, but two of the things I'd like to see and hear is the blighted properties, like if you go up Pleasant Street and there's broken windows, and then they put plywood or something, they need to do something with the windows, the, the people that own that property. Put a curtain, dress them up, clean them, do something, it looks terrible. And the other thing is the weeds on the sidewalk, that is driving me absolutely bonkers. People need to take pride in the city where they live. I mean, I think, you know, all of us who've had homes, we clean the weeds. I mean, government is not going to go out there, city's not going to go out there and clean every sidewalk and clean the leaves, the weeds, let's work together. I know I heard the mayor on the radio Saturday, and he even said, I'll pay somebody a hundred bucks if you catch somebody dumping, and you get a license plate or whatever, I'll give you a hundred dollars out of my pocket. So I hope somebody hears that, if you see somebody dumping, because they make, it just makes the city look trashy. And we're better than that, folks, we're better than that. But those are the things, the next, the next meeting, when we go for passage, I'll have an amendment. But for right now, I'll vote for it to go through first reading.
Counselors, if I may, the, we also had some recommendations from the Law Department, there were a couple of items that just needed, basically it was housekeeping, just to keep all of these in line, so those are also included as part of this.
Thank you.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas residents who live on and around Indian Town Road have expressed concern regarding speeding in the neighborhood, and whereas Indian Town Road connects residents and visitors of Fall River to numerous nature preserves, trails in the watershed area, and whereas the quality of life and safety for residents, pedestrians, and drivers are of utmost importance, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the Director of Traffic and Parking and a representative of the Fall River Police Department to discuss methods to improve public safety and decrease speeding in the Indian Town Road area.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Whereas the Bank Street Armory is a, a historical property owned by the city of Fall River that is in dire need of renovations and redevelopment, and whereas the Historical Commission and the administration are working toward developing a financial plan for these necessary repairs, which would include grant applications, and whereas all grant orders must be adopted by the city council to allow this form of funding to be utilized, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Finance convene with the administration and a representative of the Historical Commission for regular updates regarding the renovation plan and funding process for the revival of the Bank Street Armory.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And the motion, council seat two, I'm sorry about that.
No, I'm sorry. I think this is a great resolution, but I don't remember the Historical Commission I, I, I don't remember them, and the ordinance being written, giving them oversight of the Bank Street Armory. So how do we hold them accountable when they don't have the authority yet?
Point of information.
Do you yield, counsel seat two?
Please.
Yeah, so that, that whole discussion took place in ordinance about the, the question about where and what's and what have you, so that, that was all
kind of worked out at this point, that's what led to that resolution being filed.
But how has it worked out if in ordinance, it still says Park Department?
The, counsel Pror, you want to, I'll let you.
Park Department does not have it, they found that it was not under the jurisdiction of the Park Department, so we can send it wherever. And that's why the administration and the Historical meet together at Finance to come up with a plan. Park Department never had it. They said they did, but, well, they didn't say they did, it's, it said, we, that was the, you know, the feeling that it was under them, but it wasn't.
So we have the ability to do it.
We have the ability to do it.
Do you yield, counsel?
I yield.
Counselor in seat two, do you yield the floor, you all set, or? Counselor, you all set, counsel?
I am.
Point of information, I, I think the concern was is that the language was in ordinance, the current ordinance. I, listen, I just, I just wanted to clarify that. I, I, whether or not somebody has it, control or not, I mean, if it's in ordinance, if, if they don't have it, we've got to change the ordinance because the ordinance would still suggest that they have control.
I agree. Counselor seat three, counsel, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. President, I think too that what they're referring to here at that ordinance meeting, the Historical Commission Director did state that the fall season is the season where they, where they are going to be in, trying to get loans or something to that effect, and I think that's why that, that language is in here. I don't know if it has anything to do with what we're discussing, but that is why, I'm, I'm guessing that language is in there, because that's their season too for grants and federal funding.
Understood, counsel, thank you. Counselor seat four, counsel Kilby, do you have your hand up?
We also.
Yeah, I was just going to point out that it's a resolution. It's not binding on anyone, on us, it's just a discussion.
Understood.
And a Star Commission has expressed interest many, many, many times in being a part of, you know, the process and what, what will happen with the Armory, so it's a resolution, so.
I yield. Understood. Counselor in seat two?
And I agree with you, I'm not disagreeing with you. Article three, Article three, Armory, fifty-four dash one oh one. The Board of Park Commissioners shall have and exercise all the powers, duties, and responsibilities of the Armory Commission. The Board of Park Commissioners shall promote the city armory in a manner which will be most beneficial to the city, and shall endeavor to maximize and diversify its use. So the only request, and I, I did this in a resolution and asked, take out Board of Park Commissioners and insert Historic Commission, that's simple.
That, well, I would, I, I don't think I yield, did I? Well, it's okay.
Well, I yield.
It's okay, counsel.
You all yield.
Well, that, that's an issue of ordinance to take up.
Right.
Oh my God, Mr. President. Mr. Part, point of.
Counsel.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Counselor seat six.
Mr. President, point of order, this is nuts. We have a resolution before us right now that it's going to go before the ordinance committee, invite whoever you want. All right, this is so crazy, we're talking about this for ten minutes. Our colleague in seat two makes a great point, please, if I can call the question, please, Mr. President? And vote, roll call?
Thank you. No problem. My, uh, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That just went to the Finance Committee, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, the resolution says it's going to Finance.
Okay, it's a resolution.
No, that's true.
My colleague said it was going to ordinance.
Right.
The resolution says it's going to Finance.
Might get refinanced, might get sent after.
I just wanted to clarify, that's it. Did I say ordinance?
You did.
I meant whatever.
And I didn't clarify it, but I know what you meant. It's a resolution.
Finance, yep.
Okay, the next one.
Whereas there is an ongoing housing shortage throughout the city of Fall River in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and whereas many commercial property owners are renovating apartments to create additional rental rooms for individuals who are unfamiliar with each other, not families, friends, or roommates that are in violation of city ordinances and state building codes, and whereas there is no city ordinance regarding specific restrictions on rooming houses, also known as lodging houses, other than an annual license fee within the city of Fall River, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordnances and Legislation convene with Corporation Council, the Building Inspector, and a representative from the Community Development Agency to discuss the creation of a proposed ordinance related to regulation of rooming and lodging houses to assist with structural building safety, fair and equitable neighborhood development, and the quality of life for all property owners and tenants.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, on the motion, council seat five.
Just to put this in, because what's happening, a few pieces of property, if it's a three-family with two bedrooms each, they're going in and they're making four bedrooms or five bedrooms in each of the apartments, and then renting out the rooms to individuals who don't know one another, whether it was the shelter, we found you a room, you're there stepping stone, Catholic Social Services, so you have all these people moving in, and then there's fights and police are there, that's a rooming house, and we don't have any regulations on that, we have to look at that. It's happened to locations that I know of, and both times there's been police responses made there, I think a stabbing at one, and you, you, if you're getting somebody a home, getting them an apartment, you need to have services there too for some people, and that's just not happening.
I'm just curious, how do they convert a two-bedroom into a four-bedroom?
Because you take the double parlor and you make two bedrooms out of it, so it's a two-bedroom, now it's a four-bedroom. So now you've got a dining room and a kitchen, a bathroom, and four bedrooms. That's how they're doing it.
Oh, blood may be eight bedrooms.
And then they charge everybody, you know, five hundred dollars per room, they're making a lot of money, that's not fair. It's not fair to the people that are living there either.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, through you, could I, could I just ask the clerk to just verify, we don't have something on the books or the state law, because I, I felt like back under the Flanagan administration, we, we shut down a, what was considered a rooming house because they didn't have the proper, proper permits, and that was on Bank Street. So it's got to be something that was.
Something state, but not, not here, and the state isn't good enough, Lauren checked it for me.
Okay.
It's not.
All right, thank you.
We'll have to call Joe Bisco.
No, I, I just remember there was, there was one particular house that was a nuisance property that was just doing exactly that.
He was involved in it.
And, and we shut, right, we, we shut it down, so.
Madam Clerk?
Item twenty-five is an order granting permission to Mass Electric doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England for jointly owned pole location at Current Road.
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-six is the order granting permission to Mass Electric doing business as National Grid in Verizon, New England for jointly owned pole locations on Kilburn Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have an order, um, granting permission to Kyra Cudero for the removal of curbing at Hyacinth Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have an order granting permission to Angelica Pennefield, um, for the removal of curbing at seventy-one Ash Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item twenty-nine is the order granting permission to Antonia Di Carvallo for the removal of curbing at thirteen forty-two County and Alsop Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item thirty is the order granting permission to James Andrews doing business as five-oh-eight Auto Sales and Repair at fifty-nine North Quarry Street. This is the matter that we have...
Motion for Committee on Regulations.
Second.
Motion for Committee on Regulations has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have the police chiefs report licenses?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We have the, um, applications for the renewal of auto repair shop licenses at one-ninety-six Oak Grove Avenue and one-seventy-eight Aberdeen Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item thirty-three is the request for the transfer of an auto repair shop license located at fourteen thirty-nine Plymouth Avenue.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item thirty-four is the warrant for the state primary election to be held on September third.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, that's going to start seven o'clock in the morning or eight o'clock? What's the election?
Seven.
Seven to eight for the state elections. It's what the public turn out. Madam Clerk?
Item thirty-five, our claims.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Motion for the Corporation Council has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item thirty-six is a communication from Dave Pitney, L.L.P., on behalf of the American Civil Liberties Union of Massachusetts.
Motion accepted, place on file.
Motion for, for the Corporation Council.